Well, great evening, everyone. It just seems as though we haven't seen each other in a long time. I miss your smiling face. You miss our smiling faces? All right, thank you so much and welcome to our Board of Trustees' regular meeting for April 21st, 2025. It is Community College Month, so please, all of those delicious treats back there, I want you to eat them up. I want you to gain a few pounds like me in the waist and everywhere else, and we don't want to take anything home, okay? So make sure you get it all and take it all. All right? So without further ado, Ms. Duncan, would you call the roll, please?
Terri Frazier, Noel Garcia, Hope Lavelle, Angela Matthews, Robert Proctor, Chatham Taylor, Ashonda Thomas.
Thank you. Trustee Garcia, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you so much. We are going to move on to approval of our March 17th, 2025 Board of Trustees' meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Trustee Thomas. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Lavelle. It has been moved by Trustee Thomas, second by Trustee Lavelle, to approve the minutes of the March 17th, 2025 Board of Trustees' meeting. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan, will you call the roll, please?
Noel Garcia, Angela Matthews, Chatham Taylor, Ashonda Thomas, Robert Proctor, Hope Lavelle, Terrence Frazier, motion carried.
Thank you. We're moving on to Agenda, excuse me, Agenda Item Number Five. Additions and deletions to the agenda. This excludes the Consent Agenda. Only items on the agenda excluding the Consent Agenda. Hearing no additions or deletions? We will move on to Agenda Item Number Six. Limited Public Comment Regarding Agenda Items. Ms. Duncan, is there anyone signed up for this portion?
No, not for limited public comment.
Patrick, anyone online? Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven. President's Report, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, Chair Matthews. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, trustees, members of the audience. It's great to be back at the board. Happy Community College Month. Before I get started, I have a brief oral report. Chair Matthews, you know, I always like to highlight the written President's Report and thank the entire team for developing it. It's available online. A few things to highlight. The cover is the Corrections Academy graduation, and it is what we all affectionately refer to as Celebration Season here at LCC. I see Dean Dwyer fist pumping the air. We love to celebrate our students' success, and it's that time of year. So, and I just want to acknowledge for the trustees and for everyone here, how many of our trustees come to many of those celebrations and help us celebrate those students? So thank you for doing that. We love Celebration Season. On pages 10 through 13, there is a very impressive list of the clients who received service from BCI, small and large corporations, including TechSmith, Gestamp, Tetra Tech, Block Image, many more. On page 16, there's a long list of programming from the Office of Empowerment, coverage of their amazing events, including the Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta Celebration, which was outstanding, just outstanding, as well as the events we had to commemorate the Birthday Week of Maya Angelou. So those are in the President's Report. And then finally, trustees, on page 17, there's a little blurb about our continuing success in partnering with the University of Michigan-Flint on transfer from RN to BSN. So as always, the President's Report is a wealth of information of accomplishments on behalf of our students. So just a couple of things. Patrick, if you pull up my slides or go to the next one. It is Community College Month, and I want to thank Ms. Benita Duncan and Marilyn Twine for commemorating with the food that Chair Matthews mentioned. There's cookies and soda. We like to make a big deal about Community College Month. We are participating with the American Association of Community Colleges with this year's theme, which is Best Decision Ever. And you can see on our web banner and social media campaign commemorating April as Community College Month. Next, Chair Matthews, I'm happy to tell you about our success, recent success at Capitol Day. Last Thursday, community college professionals descended upon the Capitol. Here at LCC, we call this Amateur Day because we are right down the street, and we go to visit our lawmakers all the time. So it really was a wonderful turnout. Trustees Proctor, Thomas and Taylor joined, Dr. Glasgow and Lena Ingram and me, and we met with a lot of legislators. But I want to tell you what an incredible event this has become at the Michigan Community College Association. Under the direction of Katie Wachowski, who is the Legislative Affairs Director, there were more than 120 combined meetings between community college professionals and lawmakers. MCCA representatives last Thursday met with 100 of the 147 elected lawmakers at our Capitol. That included 180 of us, 52 students, 17 mascots, 40 presidents, chancellors and trustees. So, and 27 of the 31 colleges were represented. One more community, if you could go to the next slide, Patrick. One more picture. Oh, I thought there were two. Oh, you already did the two. That was it. Very good. So we had excellent meetings with our representatives and their staff. We had a shared meeting with Senator Anthony's staff. We shared that meeting with Betanok Community College and Alpena Community College. And our lawmakers, Rep. Evendorf, Senator Singh, the staff of Senator Anthony, Representative Serna Glue and Rep. Whitwer, we met with their staff. So, great. And thank you to those of you who were able to join. Next, trustees, we always like going to the American Association of Community Colleges. That was in Nashville this year. As you can see with the selfies, this is when I get to see a lot of my college president friends from around the country. But the highlight for us was going to a session led by Dean Bo Garcia and Lee Gardner. They led a session called Choose Your Own Education Adventure, LCC's three-tiered model. And their colleague Molly Port was there. A packed room, really interested in hearing how LCC does workforce development. I also met with my colleagues from the Group Education for All, who are working to defend and protect the work of equity in higher education. We had a great meeting. And we also had a great reception jointly with the Ohio Association of Community Colleges, where the Michigan and Ohio leaders got together. So that's AAC, AACC. And then there's some other, oh, and we went out to dinner. Oh, and there's a little picture. It's actually the outgoing president of the ACC's last meeting. So. No, 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 no. I'm not going anywhere, Chair Matthews. This is Walter Bumpfus. Walter Bumpfus has been the president of AACC for many years, and it was his last convention. Okay. Last slide. I am excited for the two trustees who haven't yet participated in commencement. We are going to have a great commencement. And I want to talk to you a little bit about the traditions. Here's some pictures. We really rock the President's Center. If you go to the next one, Patrick. So our speaker is Brandy Johnson. We're very excited to have Brandy Johnson. This year is Kelly Ellsworth. That's just. And it is our third year of what we're calling our Traditions of Excellence. We have custom regalia for you all. You are the best dressed trustees at any community college. And it's the third year we've used this. I actually opened up the case to bring out our mace. This mace is made out of really significant materials from LCC. The wood on that mace is old growth pine that was part of Old Central, our very first college building. There are pieces in here from all the original buildings, and it was designed by Bruce Mackley. Is Bruce here tonight? Yeah, you got to see it. Fabulous part of the mace was the idea and the design. But at the bottom of this little group of pictures, you can see Bruce's original drawing and what it came out looking like. And when I first saw Bruce's drawing, I thought, I'm probably setting myself up to be disappointed because there's no way that it could be, it could look that. It looked exactly like his drawing. And so I brought it out physically so folks who haven't had a chance to see it, pick it up and look at it, could look at that. And with that, Chair Matthews, the last thing is I'm very delighted to welcome new employees in our section we call A Star is Hired. They're all invited to the board meeting, not required that they come. Are any of our new employees here at the board meeting, could you stand up and introduce yourselves? The trustees love meeting our new members. Sir, if you could. Great, welcome.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome. Of you, thank you for attending the board meeting. You are welcome to stay for the whole board meeting. But the trustees would also not be offended if you had other things to do. Very happy to meet you and see you. So you're welcome to stay, but if you are to leave, nobody will think anything bad about that. And with that, that is my report. Chair Matthews?
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. I don't see anybody taking any juice back there. There's cookies back there. So if you decide that you want to leave, then I'm going to be watching you to make sure that you get a whole bunch of those delicious delectables and take them with you.
I think what the chair is saying, you don't leave empty-handed.
All right. Thank you so much. That was a great report. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight. Consent Agenda Action Items. To my colleagues, are there any items that you would like to remove from the Consent Agenda Action Items?
Chair Matthews, could we please pull the RFP for the Campus Wide Radio Frequency System?
All right. And are there any others? I would like to pull Item Number C, which is the sublease between the LCC and the camera. So without further ado, is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda Action Item A, one and two, excluding B1 and C, addendum number seven? Thank you, Trustee Thomas. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Trustee Taylor. It has been moved by Trustee Thomas and second by Trustee Taylor to approve Consent Agenda Item Number A, Board of Trustees', Item Number One and Two. Any discussions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan, would you call the roll?
Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Ashonda Thomas.
Aye.
Robert Proctor.
Aye.
Noel Garcia. Angela Matthews.
Yes.
Hope Lavelle.
Aye.
Terrence Frazier. Motion carried.
Is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item Number B? Request for Proposal Campus Wide Radio Frequency System?
That we approve, Item B.
Thank you, Trustee Lavelle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Thomas. It has been moved by Trustee Lavelle and second by Trustee Thomas to approve Consent Agenda Action Item Number B. Request for Proposal Campus Wide Radio Frequency System Discussion.
Yes. I was hoping we can just talk a little bit about the contractor selection process. I saw that we do put it out on a website, but can we just kind of give a little bit more color in terms of our ask and what we're looking for?
Chair Matthews, if I could. There are a couple teammates here who could speak to that. It's a great question. Before anyone speaks to the bid processing, I do want to talk about the public safety nature and the funding nature of this. There was funding in last year's appropriation from the state that was specifically targeted at public safety. And so that's the source of these funds. And Dr. Sammy, I believe Dr. McCursie, did you want to say something before Dr. McCursie? And Dr. Sammy, I believe Dr. McCursie, did you want to say something before Dr. McCursie speaks to this?
Sure. I can give you some general information on the procurement process. So we do have a website that we use, and it's a website that not only we use to solicit vendors, but it's a website that's used by the state of Michigan and others to make sure that we get an opportunity to solicit proposals for vendors. Because as a public entity, we can't just say, you know, we're having this big solicitation and we're only going to go to two different vendors. We have to make sure that we give the opportunity to any vendor who would like to participate. So we publicly post our solicitations, and whoever is interested in providing a response to those solicitations, they can pull down a form, they fill out the information. Once we receive that information, it's evaluated by a team of evaluators. So every time we submit these for board approval, we have two things. One, the cover sheet, which is just a general explanation of what we're doing. And then the transmittal, which is more detailed, what procurement vehicle did we use to purchase this? And in this case, we did a standardized request for proposal, opening it up to the public to provide responses to us. And as you can see here, we did receive two responses. And so we had a committee that reviewed those responses, and they made a decision based on the information that they received. Sometimes when we get these proposals outside of the response metric, we do kind of like, we kind of, we judge them based on what they present, and we'll give a score for each one. And so we're looking at, number one, do you meet what we want you to do? And then after that, a lot of times we'll have actual presentations from the vendor community so we can decide, you know, who we want to go with. And a lot of these cases, especially for something so technical, we'll bring in a subject matter expert so that they can review the specs and make sure everything makes sense prior to us offering anything to anyone. So that's the general process. Dr. McCursie, this is something that he requested that we purchased, so that's why he came to the podium, because he might be able to provide a little bit more detailed information on why we need this and why it's important. But in terms of the general process, we publicly post our solicitations so that the vendor community can have an opportunity to bid on it, since we are a public institution. We use dollar thresholds, and anytime anything we know we're going to spend $25,000 or more, then we publicly post it, unless we're using a cooperative agreement, which sometimes you'll see these come to you, or if we're using a no-bid process or a sole-source process because there are extenuating circumstances that exist. But in this case, it is just a run-of-the-mill request for proposal to the general public.
Thank you so much.
I do not have anything to add to that explanation, being that my boss is.
Okay.
Purchasing expert.
I do have a question. So a blanket purchase order, can you kind of tell me what is a blanket purchase? I mean, it sounds all-encompassing, but if you could just maybe share.
So I think I'll share that too. So we have two things that we do. We do a regular purchase order, and usually that's for something that's a one-time or something that we're only going to do it for a year. So, but it's a singular purchase order. And then sometimes we'll do a blanket purchase order if it's going to last for three to five years. And then what happens in between is we have individual purchase orders that are released from that blanket over the course of the years.
Great. So you all don't have to kind of come back and forth. It covers. Thank you so much.
If I could add to that, Chair Matthews, sometimes some other organizations call those batch purchase orders or bulk purchase orders. Blanket is more common.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, boss.
No further questions.
Thank you, Trustee Lovell. Would you call the roll?
Angela Matthews.
Yes.
Noel Garcia.
Yes.
LaShonda Thomas.
Terrence Frazier.
Robert Proctor.
Aye.
Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Hope Lovell.
Aye.
Motion carried.
There are motions to approve Consent Agenda Action Item C, Sublease Between Lansing Community College and Capital Area Michigan Works, addendum number 7. Thank you, Trustee Thomas.
I'll second.
Trustee Lovell. It has been moved by Trustee Thomas, second by Trustee Lovell, to approve the Consent Agenda Action Item C, Sublease Between Lansing Community College and Capital Area Michigan Works, addendum number 7. Discussion. Since I took this off, just some clarification on pages. If you go to, excuse me, 24, 25, that's where I do believe that that cover sheet and the details begin. And so 25 years is a great, it's a long time, speaks to the great working relationship, the partnership, and the collaboration between LCC and CAMWA. So can you share the data that speaks to the effectiveness of the service that we provide regarding enrollment?
While Lee Gardner comes to the podium, Chair Matthews, if I could, there's two components to this. There's the financial lease issue, right? When we're a sub lessor in this. But you've asked a question about programming and the longstanding relationship we have in workforce with Capital Area Michigan Works, and I think Lee Gardner can talk to us about the activity and why that space is needed. So, thank you.
Thank you, President Robinson. So I can only speak to the last four years, and specifically to the role that we have with workforce development with Capital Area Michigan Works. So we have four cubicles out at Capital Area Michigan Works, and they're shared by several divisions at Lansing Community College. So for the job training center, we have a lab technician who is out there three days a week. They offer sort of one-on-one consulting with people that come into Capital Area Michigan Works. They can help them with job searches, resumes. They can also help them get in touch with people at LCC that may be able to suit their needs best. So if someone comes in and they're really interested in becoming a student, even that job training center lab technician will get them in touch with the right advisor and with Student Services to help them along that path. We also have Health and Human Services representation there. Dr. Will Emerson is out there, the director of apprenticeships. He works very closely with the refugee services out there to help with that programming. And then we also have advising and other Student Services that kind of float in those cubicles as well. So the way that I view the partnership is it's really kind of all hands on deck. We want LCC representation there, and I know Capital Area Michigan Works really values that relationship and knowing that there's someone that's going to be on-site there that they can put people in touch with for their educational endeavors. One other thing I'd mention, too, is that we also offer workshops out at Capital Area Michigan Works. So in addition to the lease space, they give us access to their classroom, and we offer free-of-charge computer basic workshops, resume writing, cover letter, job search skills, and we're just expanding and expanding those offerings year after year. So as far as data on what that has meant in terms of enrollment, I don't have that. I could certainly work with our registrar to see if we have something that we could find. But we probably interact with about 150 to 250 people a year out at Capital Area Michigan Works.
Okay, hold on. Go away to where. Trustee Taylor, then Trustee Thomas.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Matthews. So I agree, I think it's a great partnership. I've heard about it. But my question is, what has been the feedback from the actual Capital Area Michigan Works regarding the previous agreements? And then also with that, are there any plans to communicate the details of the sublease to the LCC community? As a community member, I know that it's there, but how are we communicating that with the majority of the community so that they know those services are there? You know, is there any plans for that?
Not that I'm aware of, but it is a fantastic idea, and I'm sure it is something that we can work on with Maryland and the communications area. In terms of feedback as far as previous lease agreements, I also don't have any specific feedback from Michigan Works, but what I can tell you is when we didn't have a strong presence there for a small period of time due to turnover in employees that were able to get out there, it was a very big deal to Michigan Works to not have an LCC representative there as much. This is a very, very important relationship to them, and so we're happy that we're fully staffed and able to do that.
Thank you, Chair. Could you explain what the Health and Human Services offer while they're there?
To the best of my abilities, yes. I don't think about some of this. Okay. In my working with Dr. Will Emerson, he's out there working with their New Americans program, which is a program and grant funding that Michigan Area Works has specifically to help new people that have come to our country. Since that is with Health and Human Services specifically, he has programming that he can essentially offer scholarships to qualified new Americans that have come here. So one example that I am familiar with is we have a ESOL for Health Careers class that came out of that grant funding. And so people that came to Michigan Works that were interested in the healthcare field that needed to increase their English language proficiencies, they could come to us through Will Emerson and HHS and be able to take that program free-of-charge to increase their English levels. Similarly, I believe that he uses that funding as well for new Americans looking for specific apprenticeship opportunities in HHS program.
And that's all.
Correct. Yep.
All right. We'll come back to that when.
Sure.
Thank you.
Well.
I would like to take you up on the offer of finding out about the data.
Absolutely.
And the effectiveness of us being out there, LCC, and how that has, how that translates into enrollment.
Sure. Absolutely.
If you can get that, that would be good.
Yeah. And one other thing I would add, if it's okay. Michigan Works also has a significant amount of grant funding that they use through WEOWA Funding to send people to Lansing Community College. So whether or not that they came there through our presence, being out there through a job training center lab tech or not, we would be able to see how many WEOWA-funded people have gone to LCC.
If I could, Chair Matthews, one idea, and I could probably bring this back as part of a future president's report, would be to kind of highlight the partnership with Capital Area Michigan Works, and maybe in addition to answering the enrollment questions, get a more robust description of what Dr. Emerson is doing over there, much in the same way that we did a couple of months ago with our program for incarcerated individuals. So I'll make a note, and we can talk. Great, thank you.
Without any further discussion, Ms. Becken, would you call the roll?
Robert Proctor.
Aye.
Terrence Frazier.
Noel Garcia.
Aye.
Angela Matthews.
Yes.
LaShonda Thomas.
Hope Lovell.
Aye.
Chatham Taylor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We're moving on to monthly monitoring report. Dr. Robinson?
Chair Matthews, the first monthly monitoring report is the monthly financial statements, which are in the packet, and CFO Willskey is here to answer any questions. The weather tried to keep CFO Willskey from being here with us today, but did not succeed. On page 28 of your packets, trustee.
On the hard copy, I have 35.
Yep.
Okay. Trustees, are there any questions that you have? Okay, Trustee Lovell?
I just, let me take one. I know that the youth program revenue was up. I was just wondering if you could, I want to speak into that.
Yeah, that is correct. It was up so far for this fiscal year.
Anything, is that just kind of a recognition of a grant, or was there something that significant that drove that number?
If you're okay, I'll ask Dean Bo Garcia to come up and talk about it. They had a phenomenal selling of youth programs this year, and I'd like to give credit to them.
I'm excited to hear about it.
Yeah, we have a very strong youth enrollment program. This year particularly, we expanded by moving the program to Mason as well. We sold out our youth programming within, say, within the first week already for starting this, for this summer. So it's only grown over the course of time. It's highly marketable. We have achieved a tremendous amount of market receptivity. Thanks to Bruce Mackley, we have a tremendous marketing support as well. We have a seasoned veteran at the helm in our coordinator for youth programming. And Lee Gardner's area supports the centralized service area. So we reach out to the community very effectively. We've been doing it for quite some time. It has strong brand equity. So we have a lot of repeat customers. So between the combination of existing customers and new customers every year, it's only grown more popular over time. So it sells out fast.
About how many students?
Every year? I can tell you. Hang on a sec. I've got data right here. Of course you do. Last year, our lifelong learning youth program delivered 35 programs, and there were 375 individuals that took part in the.
Thank you very much. Happy to hear about the great work we're doing and seeing those numbers go up.
Please.
Thank you.
Have me say.
My question is, how do we decide which organization we're going to donate to? And how much do we, how do we come up with the amount we're going to donate? And I believe this was answered in my tenure, but I wanted to know.
Thank you for the question. So Dr. Glasgow oversees a program for sponsorship for particular organizations. There is a process for that, and that's how the decision of which community organization and the amount is arrived at. Dr. Glasgow, did you want to add anything more to the process? It's a longstanding process that Dr. Glasgow actually designed for us. Thank you.
I understand you used the word donate. Are we talking about foundation or sponsorship?
Let me go back.
I think we're on Exhibit G, page 40, Dr. G, which is Sister Cities, Turning Point, Lansing Promise, Phi Beta.
Sponsorship. Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you. Just to also put a plug in for the foundation, we do provide scholarships as well for the youth programs, if I'm not mistaken. But in terms of sponsorships, let's take Lansing Promise as an example. We're given a finite amount of money for cash contributions. We also provide in-kind contributions for space. And with Lansing Promise, we have the largest enrollment of any of the partners that participate in Lansing Promise. In part, that's how we determine the level of sponsorship. We make it very clear that our sponsorship dollars are not to be used for scholarships because there's plenty of money for scholarships. However, there's also administrative support that is needed. And as a partner, as far back as the Hope Scholarship, Lansing Community College has provided dollars to help support the administrative costs. Because as you know, working with the foundation, it is really important that administrative costs are as low as possible because donors do not want to pay for salaries and benefits. That assists Lansing Promise so that more of the dollars can be used for scholarships. Additionally, just generally speaking, we look at our strategic plan for the college. And if the organization's mission, if the activity lines up with the college's strategic plan, let's use Turning Point as an example. We have initiatives that focus on young men of color. We have a very strong goal for addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion. We know that young men. We know that young men of color nationally struggle with some of the academic challenges because of so many barriers, not because they're not capable. And so Turning Point aligns with our goals. We see an opportunity to have those young men be involved with Men About Progress and other, yes, other rapport round services that can be used to support their success. All of that goes into the process to determine the sponsorships. Hopefully that, that helps.
So when you give a thousand here, five here, it's because of the amount of sponsors or sponsorships or?
In, in some cases, it's based on what they ask for.
Okay.
And so I encourage folks, you have not because you ask not. We don't want to be the only one sponsoring. So one of the questions is, who are your other partners? How, how is Board of Light or Light or Case Credit Union supporting the activity, the event as well? We are not allowed to sponsor fundraisers. That's within our policy. We cannot use taxpayer dollars, general fund dollars, to support others who are raising funds. And so a lot of it is based on what are they requesting, the amount that they're requesting.
If I could, Chair Matthews, just to add on to that excellent part of the answer, trustees might remember, those of you who attended the MLK Day of Celebration, that's what Dr. G is talking about. There are sponsorship levels for an event like that, not a fundraiser, but there was a $5,000 level. And part of that is wanting to make sure that the LCC logo is with the other organizations that are similarly supporting at those levels. Correct, Dr. G?
Yes, excellent detail. Anything?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Trustees? You have another question, trustee Thomas?
Okay, thank you.
Right here?
Chair Matthews, next is the monthly public safety department report. I will tell you while we're talking about the safety report, the, the police department just went through accreditation where they had, they basically opened up their telephones for anyone in the community to call. I was encouraged to call and give feedback, had an excellent conversation with one of the creditors. And one of the things I talked about on my phone call was this report, which you all see every month as an example of transparency and policing. So the chief is here. If any of you have any questions, that's what we, that's what we have this opportunity for, but the, the monthly public safety, uh, police department report is in your pack.
Questions, trustees? Seeing and hearing none?
I believe that's it for monthly monitoring report, Chair Matthews, on the agenda.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Dr. Robinson. Moving on to linkage planning implementation, community linkage, the chair's report. I'm just so excited for Community College Month. Why? Because this is an opportunity for us to brag on everything, no holds barred. You can brag on all the programs. You can brag on the cost of community college education. You can brag on anything great and awesome. And so I would encourage you, this is nationally, so this is not only us, but all community colleges throughout the nation are doing this. And so if you have a story to tell, if you have, you know, an encouraging word, feel free on your own social media posts and that of LCCs to tell the story of a community college and how it benefits, you know, the individual, the student. There are a lot of notables, a lot of leaders that have gone to community colleges that you probably wouldn't have never thought, but you know, they have. I, you know, Kelly Ellsworth-Etchison, when I found out she was an alum, I was like, oh, wow, she went to LCC. And she is very prominent and well-respected in this community. And so there are others. So this is an opportunity, all hands on deck, brag, 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 is what I can say. So hopefully you will do that. Also, in piggybacking on Dr. Robinson with the accreditation for the Public Safety Office, I had an opportunity to participate in that, and I am grateful for the, the invitation from Chief Gaines. When you're in there with these suits, and they're looking quite intimidating, you know, but they made it very relaxing. They asked the pertinent questions, questions that I would have answered anyhow because our public safety department is stellar. And they said that, and that they had no doubt about what we were saying. I, you know, bragged on the, I love that Ganon ramp, we bragged about that. We bragged about, or I bragged about the post, um, emergency post if someone wants to call for help that they can use. I bragged about how there is no job too big or small for our public safety officers. You want to walk to your car because you, you know, don't want to walk by yourself at night, they will do that. So we have a great public safety department, and thank you, Chief Gaines and your team. I do give you kudos because you're doing a great job. You are doing a great job. Your presence is here on campus. I also want to thank, I think Dr. Cindy, Cynthia Beautiful Basket, I participated. And did I mention that, Dr. Samuel? It's been so long, I, I don't know what's going on, so I didn't turn, you know, this age and, you know, my memory is kind of going a little bit. No, please, no, it's not, it's very sharp. Okay? So, but thank, I just wanted to thank her personally for that basket. And then I want you to know that our PR department is doing great. I was at the Secretary's, Secretary of State office getting my real ID, and I'm looking at the, at the screen just, you know, tell I'm service, and saw LCC just all up in the house, just all up there. And so everywhere you turn, you are seeing LCC everywhere. Billboards, late at night when you're watching television, on the news. I mean, we are everywhere. So I wanted to give the PR department a great big kudos. You are doing a great job. That's what I called, am I hearing the noise? That's what I call noise, when I can go anywhere and I can see something LCC, that's making noise to me. So I truly appreciate that. The other thing is that I wanted to give a big shout out to Melissa and her team and our theatrical department. They have so much going on to, it's hard to attend everything. But I just want you to know that we recognize you, that we are aware, and we try individually and collectively to support, but y'all just got a lot. So it's appreciated, you know, when we're not there, trust me, it is appreciated. Please know that we see it. Please know that we appreciate you and all that you're doing. Please know that. And that is all that I have for my chair's report. I will turn this over to the board member report for the foundation, trustee Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, myself and trustee Fraser have been appointed as the members on the foundation and executive director itself, did an onboarding meeting for both of us, and it separately and very thorough. I appreciate that. I'm glad to be on the foundation committee. Already mentioned a couple of times today, two announcements. One is that Kelly Ellsworth-Etchison has been selected as the 2025 LCC Distinguished Alumni. Little background on her, I've already heard some, is she is a graduate of Lansing Community College with an associate's degree in general studies. She has spent four years of her career at Lab Q, advancing from a lone interviewer to chief marketing officer, and now serves in a dual role of chief marketing officer and chief diversity officer. I've had the pleasure of being on a number of committees, commissions, when I was with the city of Lansing, task forces. And I was also on the East Lansing Independent Police Oversight Commission with her husband. So they're a power couple, that's for sure here in the city of Lansing. We appreciate that and well-deserved award that she's getting there. Second announcement is 505 scholarships were offered earlier this month for this next academic year. And students still have until Sunday to accept these scholarships. Those that are not accepted will be offered to other students in early May. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, trustee Garcia. You did a great job. Fraser would be proud of it.
Moving on the agenda, unfinished business scene, non-hearing none, new business scene, non-hearing none. We're moving on to public comment. At this time, the public can address the trustees, the board, please ma'am, please sir. There is a three-minute limit with public comment. Ms. Benita, do we have anyone for public comment?
Yes, we had Kathy Zell and then different counselors. So I guess Kathy Zell, and then after her, there's counselors, and then the local cabinet who's online.
All right, I'll go first. So I think everybody on the board of trustees knows me, but for those of you who may not, I lead the foundation. And I wanted to share today that the last board of directors meeting, the foundation board, we recognized trustee Thomas and Chair Matthews for their service serving on the board. And I wanted to read the resolutions, and I've got a little memento, if you'll let me give those to you. But so, whereas LaShonda Thomas, Angela Matthews have been a committed advocate for Lansing Community College and have worked tirelessly to advance Lansing Community College Foundation. Whereas LaShonda Thomas and Angela Matthews has provided excellent leadership to the board of directors. And whereas LaShonda Thomas and Angela Matthews has faithfully, with great integrity and distinction, provided two years, trustee Thomas, six years, Chair Matthews, of exemplary service as a director of Lansing Community College Foundation. So it be resolved Thursday, February 27th, 2025, that the Lansing Community College Foundation Board of Directors formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation to LaShonda Thomas and Angela Matthews for two years and six years' service to the board of directors and her commitment to its mission to support the foundation, Lansing Community College, and its students. And I want to add personally that trustee Thomas, anytime we needed a committee member, a something extra, she was one of the first to volunteer, and I so appreciate that. And Chair Matthews, you were always, anytime we had a special need or needed money for something, trustee Matthews was the first one to donate. And if she didn't, I'd get a call four or five hours later saying, how much more money do we need? And if she didn't donate that personally, she made the phone calls to make it happen. And I appreciate the support that you both gave me, but I also love that that shows your commitment to our students, and I'm so very proud of that. And we're going to miss you tremendously, as excited as I am for trustee Garcia and Fraser. We will miss you. And I just wanted to take a moment to say that, and I've got a copy of the resolution. And if I can approach?
Absolutely.
Oh.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening, members of the board and President Robinson. My name is Louise Rabidou, and I'm one of the licensed professional counselors here at LCC. And in addition to April being Community College Month, April is also Counseling Awareness Month. So so we wanted, our, our team wanted to come and introduce ourselves and tell you a little bit about the work that we do here with students. Mainly counselors work, we meet with students to help them cope with a wide variety of personal challenges. Many college students seek counseling for the first time in their lives, and it can be very intimidating. And so we welcome their referral. We also support the campus community through wellness presentations and collaborate with faculty and staff across campus. And when students receive timely mental health support, their chances of staying in school and completing their degrees rise significantly. So counseling truly saves futures, and we're honored to be part of that work.
Hello, good evening, I'm Pam Davis, and I'm also a licensed professional counselor here at LCC. And along with my colleagues, I help students not just survive, but thrive here at the college. Our work spans personal counseling, crisis responses, and educational outreach. We also serve on the behavioral intervention team with, which collaborates with the Office of Student Compliance, the police department as well, and to ensure the safety of our students and our campus community. Studies show that students who receive mental health support are more likely to persist in their studies and achieve academic success. Our mission is to ensure every student has that chance. Thank you for supporting our work and for recognizing the counseling ways.
Good evening, I'm Jim. I'm also a mental health counselor here and a proud graduate of LCC. I'm 12 months away from my doctorate, so this place gave me my start and putting the start of it. Thank you. I have a few comments here. As counselors, we are committed not only to helping students manage anxiety, depression, academic distress, but also to help them find direction, hope, and purpose. LCC is a place where people come to change their lives, and in doing so, they change the lives of everyone in our community, and I'm incredibly proud to be a part of that mission. Dr. Robinson and I have talked about this, every day I step foot onto this campus, I'm thinking about the 13,000 students whose mental health needs we are responsible for, as is he and all of us who work here frankly. But according to recent national research from top universities, of that student body, approximately 10,000 will experience a mental health crisis while they're with us. Over 8,000 would scream positive for anxiety, 5,000 for depression, and 7,000 for what we are now calling the loneliness epidemic. And those struggles don't just affect students, they ripple out through our entire college community. And it's no surprise that mental health is one of the top reasons that students stop out or drop out. Yet despite those daunting statistics, we stand as a potent bulwark against those daunting odds, and we, I think, are a powerful force for hope and healing and change for our students. So I truly, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you, Dr. Robinson, Dee Miller, and all those who support our work here. Thank you.
Well, good evening, board members, coworkers, and guests. My name is Kirlada. I usually say Kirlada, da-da-da, because, you know, my name is unique, and there are now a few coworkers that have a name similar to me. Well, I humbly serve Lansing Community College as a licensed professional counselor. And my colleagues and I prioritize to be available to students every weekday that the college is open. And so every week, you know, I meet with students who are balancing a plethora of focuses, you know, from coursework to jobs to family caregiving and relationships. And along with that, they're also struggling with short-term or longer-term mental, emotional behavior, behavioral, and physical challenges. You know, research study results say that students who meet with and have available licensed professional counselors on their community college setting, as Jim alluded to, do achieve higher GPAs and do have stronger retention. And nationally, you know, as Jim mentioned, a lot of students, 60% of students are reporting loneliness. So licensed professional counseling on campus becomes not only helpful but essential for them because we become reliable listening ears for them. And we also can help them if they make regular sessions, you know, minimize or maybe pull to the table their social abilities so that they can make friends better, because you know, that's part of it too. So in conclusion, I do thank you for your service and for your commitment. So in conclusion, I do thank you for your service and for your commitment to student I just completed, I just made, I'm in Toastmasters and I started here at LCC as Lansing Lucidus back in November of twenty sixteen. Sarah Lance Garcia was one of the key people on the West Campus along with the deans and the administrators there who spent three years making it happen. I was stationed on West Campus and so three years later I came along and got involved and I've been involved ever since along with some students who are charter members. But I just want to say for the first time after almost seven years in the organization, I competed in a online speech contest. I won in my area. We have like area clubs in which there are four to six clubs in every area. I won in our division and that's four to six areas in the division and I placed third in the district, which was four divisions with four to six areas who had four to six clubs. And I felt like that was really good to place third because what I did was better understand how to speak in four to seven, four to seven minutes and thirty seconds and tell people, capture the audience attention, tell people what I wanted to tell them, tell them, relate to them on my topic in other areas that might relate to their lives, and then tell them what I told them and give them a call to action. So I, I mean, I just want to say there are various ways to communicate and public, you know, doing a speech is not the way in which, it's not the basic way that I went into it for. I never expected to do it and it's not what Toastmasters does. It does, you know, communication, all kinds of communication development and leadership development, plays into practice. So if you know of any students that want to get in Lansing Lucidus or any club, let me know.
All right. Patrick, do we have, oh, are there any others? Miss Duncan?
Okay. Patrick, we have someone online.
Hi, good evening trustees and Dr. Robinson. I'm Melissa Cafflin, I'm the Academic and Arts Outreach Coordinator. And Chair Matthews, thank you for the shout out and thank you all for your support. We recognize how thin you are all spread attending so many things that are happening at the college and we have just such an abundance here of, of really wonderful activities and opportunities. And I would be remiss if I did not recognize the big teams of people that are talented and creative that go into making all these, these arts and cultural and interdisciplinary events happen. So of course, as you've become accustomed, I'm here to tell you about something that's coming up, one of the many things, but I just want to mention StarScapes. StarScapes is a student innovation and creativity showcase and it happens at the end of every fall and spring semester. It is a really special event. It was created in twenty fourteen as a means for students to share their innovative coursework and accomplishments with the entire campus community. It's a two-day fair of demonstrations and presentations and performances, poster talks, displays, both in person and online. And students gain presentation skills and confidence and they discover the work of other students in other disciplines. So to date, there have been eighteen StarScapes showcasing the work of thousands of LCC students from across the college. It's open to every single student and it's attended by students, faculty, staff, the community, and of course you are invited both to attend in person, if you're able to stop by, Gannon Commons and the Gannon Highway, April thirtieth and May first, between ten and four, that's when the in-person displays happen. And then also online, those displays are, and presentations are accessible at any time. We welcome you to explore and always welcome your support and appreciate the opportunity to share this with you. Thank you.
Any others, Patrick? Seeing none? Okay, moving on to board comments. Board comments, trustee Thomas and trustee Taylor.
Thank you, chair. I want to piggyback off the chair from, I felt like you, when I went to Case Credit Union and I was able to get my debit card and it had the LCC star, oh, I acted up in there. I'm like, oh my God, yes! And they were like, okay, just take it. I'm like, oh, thank you. I heard the noise, so I understand. Also, happy belated, ma'am, madam.
Thank you, absolutely.
Your birthday was when?
Put me on the spot. This is a board meeting.
In the board meeting. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yeah. Also, speaking on Capitol Day, it was great. It's always nice to meet with our legislators, it's always nice to have them as our partners, it's very nice to have them as our advocates. So, and, and being LCC, we always brag, we're able to brag because of you. So we hold our head up high when we go into places and with other community colleges, we know we're number one, so that's all that matters. Okay, that's coming from me, not the president. So it's always good to have our legislators advocate. They really, really adore LCC and they really want to do what they have to do to make us great, so that's always a plus. Also, foundations, thank you so much for the recognition. Trying to choke me up, nope. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. We do try our best to do what we have to do and put our best foot forward, so thank you so much, I appreciate you all. Last but not least, counseling month. As a fellow social worker, oh, absolutely, mental health is so important to not only myself, but to all of us, it should be because it matters. It's not normal to pull a trigger just because you felt like it or because you were going through something, it's not normal. So to have you guys here at our campus helping our students to feel better, sometimes all it takes is a conversation and you just see the weight lift up off of the individual. They come in so heavy sometimes and then when they get done, it's like, whoa! And you'll hear them even say, I feel so much better. I'm like, me too, like, this is great. That's one less person that you have to worry about doing something that's not normal or abnormal, so harshly done. So thank you guys for your work, thank you for your time. It's not an easy task, it's not an easy job, and for faculty and teachers who sit in the role without the title. So thank you all for your work, I appreciate you.
So I just wanted to kind of speak on the Capitol Day. I know Dr. Robinson spoke on it a little bit, but it was my first experience and I had a wonderful time. I, I always say this and I know I said this there, but Dr. Glasgow and Dr. Robinson, seeing them in action and the way they speak, you could tell there's a passion for what they're doing. And I said this before I left there, I enjoy listening to them talk to the legislators and their, it's, it's the way they say it and they're knowledgeable and they're getting their point across. And so what I'm doing is I'm listening and I'm learning, you know, part of my area of focus for, you know, when I was running was community advocacy. So I got that down, but the legislative part I'm still learning. So, but one of the key things that stuck out to me was the dual enrollment. So we talked about a lot of things, but dual enrollment was a key piece. And as we all know, dual enrollment is a proven tool for equity and success, but to grow it, we need our community, we also need our state legislators. And so I looking forward to having the possibility of what they said, dedicated staffing on the high school level to help the students, to help the parents, to help the community with enrollment scheduling, things like that. I believe that's how it's going to come together. So I am looking forward to that for LCC and things like that. But overall, it was, it was wonderful and just listening to you guys as well, so.
Well, okay. We are sharing this month with you, so you better take some of that stuff back. So, so, real quick story. Being a student first while I was a trustee, because I was a trustee while I was a student here. And I, I went to a class and this class was just awesome and amazing. I was in the class as a student, never wore that, wore the hat of trustee because I don't do that. I go in as myself. And so there was this professor that I had and at first when I was in the class, I was a little intimidated because I'm like, wow, you know, these words that the professor was using, but I know these are words that's in the social work community. And so it's like, I know this, I know what I'm talking about, it's just the wording, you know, to put a definition to the word. And so this professor's class was lively, it was engaging, we not only just looked at the textbook, but we had pretty much hands-on experience because of who he was. And my question is always, who is encouraging the encourager? Who is helping those who sit for hours and listen to students of whomever and try to help them through and navigate their life circumstances and situations? And so it is because of this professor that I do more so some of the things that I do and I'm encouraged when I'm tired not to give, give up and seek out sounding boards. And so Professor Owens, he's in here and I was looking, I was like, I know that face. He doesn't have glasses on though. It's like, I know that face. And then when he said his name, I said, ah, definitely what it is. And so I just, you know, I, I just, you know, say all of that to say, we have great people working on this campus. With whatever capacity that you are in, whatever department that you are in, you are awesome, you are amazing, and none of this can happen without you. Our students could not be who they are and become if it were not for each and every one of you. And so thank you for your work, counselors that you do, your listening ear, and thank you for all of these departments that are in here for what you do. Truly, we appreciate it. All right? It is appreciated. Without further ado, any other comments? I don't believe that there are. Let's move on to closed session. There is not a closed session. So, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. Do? Trustee Lavell, is there a second? Thank you, trustee Taylor. It has been moved by trustee Lavell and seconded by trustee Taylor to adjourn, adjourn this board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, we are adjourned.